All right, welcome to the July 7th.
Recording in progress.
Welcome to the July 7th Select Board meeting, please join us.
Pledge of the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So just so everybody knows, this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live on our local table access television. It will be broadcast and also available upon demand if people want to look at it after. This is a Zoom meeting, so if we have people that are watching us from home and they have a question, just please put it in the Q and A with your name and your address for our minutes. And I'm just going to ask us to go around and introduce ourselves from where we are formed.
Jamie Stebbins.
I'm Mark Lamb.
Dottie Bojanetti.
I'm Craig Barger.
And Select Board member Jen Stacy is not here with us tonight, but we do have a forum for. We have the Town Administrator Connor Reed, Assistant Town Administrator Sean Divian, and Executive Assistant Elizabeth Heck. So with that, we are going to jump right into a timed hearing at six o'clock, public hearing. And Craig, you can lead the others.
Select Board of Easton as licensing authorities will hold a public hearing in the Colleen A. Corona Boardroom, 136 Elm Street, Easton, Mass. on Monday, July 7, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. to consider and act upon the application of Siraj Ba Corp. for a transfer of a Section 15 off-premises all alcohol beverage license, pledge of license and pledge of stock from PMB Hennessy's Corporation Doing Business, that's Hennessy's Liquors, to Siraj Ba Corp. Doing Business Hennessy Liquors for premises located at 589 Washington Street, Easton, Mass. with a plan on file in the Select Board's office.
Evening. Thank you, Board. My name is Matthew Porter. I'm the attorney for Siraj Ba Corp. Along with me is Nitin Patel. Mr. Patel is the President Treasurer Secretary. He'd also be the proposed license manager for Siraj Ba Corp. Before you is the transfer of license related to the sale of Hennessy Liquors. Siraj Ba will be taking over that location. Nitin Patel, along with his wife, or his daughter, I should say, Helly, will be the two principals of the corporation. So there's no major anticipated changes to the business, same hours, same DVA, same type of operation. Both of them have their alcohol tips certifications in place. They'll have a scanning machine in place. Mr. Patel owned a store which shut down just a few months back, but he had a beer and wine license for nearly 13 years. They had no violations whatsoever at his own location. So he's certified, he's experienced, certainly understands the rules and responsibilities that come along, you know, with the sale of alcohol. But otherwise, there are leases in place, they are financing the transaction through Rockland Trust. So as part of the application, in addition to the request for the transfer of license, we'd be requesting a pledge of license to Rockland Trust. But with that, it's a fairly straightforward transfer. Certainly happy to answer any questions that the Board may have, and Mr. Patel and Ms. Patel can as well.
Okay. What is the date of the new transfer?
It'll be A, B, C, C dependent. So right now, I don't know, next year? No. You know, hopefully, hopefully early, early fall.
So we know you're patient, then?
Yeah, yeah. So probably two months or so, 60 days out.
Okay. Jamie, I'll start with you. Do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Mark?
No questions.
No, but thank you for doing business in Easton.
Thank you.
So I would say this to, if you've been here before, you'll know exactly what I'm going to say. We say to everyone, I'm really happy to hear that you've had a tour before and that you do know what it entails and how it all exists. Easton does a compliance check twice a year. Where underage operatives will come into your business, they'll ask, they'll come to buy something, get up to the counter. If you don't card that, you're in violation immediately. So we're letting you know that, to be prepared for it. We hope that your staff is trained to card everybody. I will tell you also, the state does their own compliance checks, and sometimes they have fake IDs. You really have to check them. I've seen some of the reports where they do sometimes not get carded. So you really have to be trained well with that. We don't have any control of that, but we are aware when it does happen. And so when we do see that happen to businesses, somebody's going to, because it's college town, and we're very, we take that very seriously. So, you know, we know that things can happen, sometimes somebody makes a mistake, but just, we want to emphasize to make sure that your staff is very well trained. Okay? All right, excellent. Any other comments or questions? All right, Craig?
Move to approve the transfer of Section 15 off-premises all alcohol beverage license, pledge of license and pledge of stock from PMB Hennessy Corporation Doing Business Hennessy Liquors to Siraj Ba Corp. Doing Business Hennessy Liquors, 589 Washington Street, Easton, Mass.
Second.
So that's Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Congratulations. Thank you for choosing Easton, and we wish you great success.
Appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Next, we have a meeting on the application for a new Section 15 off-premises wine and malt beverage license. Craig will read the...
Notice of the hearing. The Select Board of Easton as licensing authorities will hold a public hearing in the Colleen A. Corona Boardroom, 136 Elm Street, Easton, Mass. on Monday, July 7, 2025, at 6:05 p.m. and consider and act upon the app... Oops, I got the wrong one, I'm sorry. Let me start that again. The Select Board of Easton as licensing authority will hold a public hearing in the Colleen A. Corona Boardroom, 136 Elm Street, Easton, Mass. on Monday, July 7, 2025, at 6:05 p.m. to consider and act upon the application of Finn Mag LLC Doing Business Furnace Brook Provisions for a new Section 15 off-premises wine and malt beverage license for premises located at 503 Foundry Street, Easton, Mass. with a plan on file with the Select Board's office.
Thanks, Craig. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for your consideration. For those of you that don't know me, for those watching on TV, my name's Neil Levine. I am the managing partner of Finn Mag LLC. This is my attorney, Scott Rubin. The property, or the space that we're, is in question, that we're seeing the license for has been a package store for over probably 40 years. It was, I think, a convenience store before that. The current tenant is going to be moving, approved the moving of that license, and we have a vacant space, so myself and my partners have decided to open up a, what's available, a beer or wine license, but more convenience kind of provisions. I wouldn't say upscale, but local products, you know, produce from Langwater Farm, beer from Shuttletown Brewery, as well as the things that you might need in a convenience type store. Best use of the space, it's been that type of a store forever, and we appreciate your consideration. If you have any questions, go right ahead.
Jamie, I'll stop with you?
Yeah, no, that's exciting. I did not know, it's great to hear this in the works, and opportunity being right next door to a wonderful establishment, so I'm excited and hope it does extremely well.
Thank you.
That's really exciting to hear. I was curious what you were going to do with that space. Sounds like an amazing use for that space. What will you call it?
Furnace Book Provisions.
Furnace Book Provisions?
Yeah. So I think it ties in really nice with the whole village feel that we're trying to accomplish there, and the master plan that you folks have with the sidewalks and the walking, and making it kind of like a neighborhood type place. There's nothing wrong with large corporate chains, but kind of an alternative to what you see in some of the larger corporate offices, corporate type, you know, stores and stuff.
Will you be doing any remodeling or anything, or on the outside or inside?
To that question, until the current tenant vacates, they're going to be there for a little while until their license process takes place and transfers, and they build out of their new space. So once they're out, I'll be able to assess what's there, what equipment's left, what needs to be done, and then we'll take it from that.
Excellent. Very exciting.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea, yeah.
Thank you, Craig.
Yeah, great idea.
So you'll, so you're going to act on it right away, in other words, you're not going to have a big mag time from the time that they leave, or?
We hope, we hope not to. It's, it's, you know, it'll be, they'll move out, we'll retrofit, get it ready to go, and take it from there.
I really like the idea of provisioning. I was thinking about that this afternoon, that, you know, even just for gifts or things like that, that you don't really see that in a lot of places. And I remember I had a friend in high school that had a business that she paired with a liquor store in Stowe, and gift baskets, different occasions. So I really love the idea about bringing in other partner vendors.
It'll, it'll be an alternative to some of the other options that are out there, as opposed to just another convenience store.
Can't wait to see it.
Yeah, low cost coming. So you heard the spiel?
Yes.
As Lois told her already, we've never had you back here, so.
Yeah. I heard that 32 years ago, and never, well, actually, you didn't have those 32 years ago. I think when Tommy Kaminsky was the chief, is that when they started?
Yeah.
I think, yeah. But we've never failed one. I shouldn't have said that.
But we appreciate that. You know, when we do have compliance failures, we really try to talk about. Might be a help here, but the majority of businesses that we have are usually in full compliance, so. All right.
So I move to approve the application of Finn Mag LLC Doing Business Furnace Brook Provisions for a new Section 15 off-premises wine and malt beverage license for premises located at 503 Foundry Street in Easton.
Second.
So that's Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good to see you, Neil.
You're welcome.
All right, next. The Human Rights Committee had an action in discussion for a Human Rights Committee appointment. Angelique Harris, who have a seat expiration June 30, 2027. I don't see Angelique here. She, did she talk to you a little bit?
She wants to be identified, she'd be here.
We can contact her.
Yeah, could we?
Yeah, why don't, why don't?
Yeah, yeah. Let's do that, because I'd like to ask some questions.
Okay, so that's the next one, Recreation Commission Appointment, Scott Turisak. Proceed expiration June 30, 2028. We have a volunteer application submitted by Mr. Turisak for this open seat on the Recreation Commission. And we also have the Commission's mission statement that I want to just mention here. So the Recreation Commission, the Recreation Department promotes an excellent quality of life for families and individuals at affordable costs through effective communications with the community to identify and implement successful activities and programs. The department promotes healthy relationships within our entire community, including youth and adults with neighboring communities. The Recreation Commission works to provide places and recreational opportunities for people to gather, celebrate, engage in activities to promote health and well-being in their community. And their Southern Member Wood is monthly to help guide and further develop the department and its programs. The Commission also serves as a core volunteer group to support the program director who follows recreation policy set by the Commission. So if you'd like to come on, Scott? Is Stan, or is that where you walk up to it? Just introduce yourself and tell us who you are, what your thoughts are, and your desire to join the Recreation Commission.
Sure. I'm Scott Turisak. I live with my wife and three kids over on Guinevere. Been a part of the community three or four years now, and with three young kids, I take up a ton of the Recreation Department's activities and sports that they have, from floor hockey to T-ball to painting and sculpture nights. And I'm probably at every playground there possibly is, here in town, three or four times a week, just to keep everybody busy. Through all of that, it's become really important to me that this town has a ton of great resources for kids to stay active and for parents of young children to keep them as active as possible. And talking to members of the community and my wife, I just thought I could do a great job helping to support that mission by helping kids stay as active as possible and giving parents of young children something to do during the summer and during the school year.
Excellent.
Just fantastic. So thank you for stepping up and volunteering, and it's fantastic. Especially, I have three children as well. It's nice when we see, you know, folks from the community get involved, that have kids, and Mark as well. So there's a few of us that have children, and love it. Gives another perspective, too, to what we're doing. And certainly, you're joining a fantastic crew as well, so thanks for coming out.
Cool.
I appreciate your want and your willingness to serve your community that you live in, and enjoy, and take advantage of what we have to offer, so thank you for stepping up.
Scott, one of the nicest things about this town is the number of people who volunteer and step up. So I really appreciate the fact that you decided to do that. I had two young children, then I had two grandchildren, and I know all about the activities and the need for keeping them up, so they go to sleep at night, so it's good, it's good. So I appreciate you stepping up.
No problem.
And the Commission is very well-rounded, because they do support programs for all ages, all abilities, very intentional and focused on being inclusive of all different abilities. So last year, they got a beach wheelchair for the town pool. There's, they work with other different ability groups in town, like House of Possibilities, the Brockton Area Arc, and make sure that we are working together to be sure that we're welcoming to everyone. So having young, young family perspective, older people, people with different abilities is really something that I'm very happy to see that they do. So your perspective is going to be very welcomed, and really appreciate you stepping up to offer to volunteer.
Happy to do it. Thanks, Hesse.
All right.
So I move to appoint Scott Turisak. Did I get that right, Turisak?
Turisak.
Turisak, to a seat on the Recreation Commission, with the expiration date of June 30, 2028.
Second.
So that's Barger and Lamb, and it's a roll call vote?
Stebbins, Turisak.
Lamb, Turisak.
Bojanetti, Turisak.
Barger, Turisak.
So congratulations, and you'll get an email from the town clerk about getting sworn in before the first meeting that you attend and the meeting schedule, so look for that email.
The meeting tomorrow, no pressure. We're trying to make sure your paperwork's sent to you before that, so we'd like to swear in the presence of the meeting is tomorrow at six o'clock on Zoom. Get you the agenda.
Cool. Thanks, Scott. Appreciate it, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, discussion and vote, Castle Booze Associates. Amendment number five, Public Safety Buildings Project for FFNE Design Procurement and Closeout.
Walter, Greg. All right, guys.
Hello?
Is this the new outfit? You got the black and the...
Summer. If you guys, there was a memo that was part of the packet.
Yes.
Proposal was provided to us by KBA back when we executed the amendment for design through DD through closeout for KBA at a time that we were just hedging our bets to make sure we were going to be able to get the project in on budget. I think as we saw during the bid, we do have some bid savings available. We also have owner soft cost contingency available. But this is going to allow the project to be, to have a, KBA to bring a design firm as a sub consultant onboard to help with the procurement and really the layout and design of the interior of the furniture. So basically, if you pick the building up, flip it upside down, everything that falls out, not the IT stuff, really just the furniture and equipment that are in the building, that are not being purchased through the construction contract. So this would be the design procurement phase, design and procurement phase, and also the closeout phase that would be handled through this amendment. The... As noted in the memo, the soft cost contingency line currently stands at 802,672. This authorization would leave about $627, $628,000 in owner soft cost contingency. And that is completely separate from the $9,42,000 and change of bid savings that was unutilized, that has been untouched to date.
Terrific.
Happy to answer. Any questions on that? Any more details for Greg on that?
Just a point of clarification. For this particular FFNE effort, we'll have our own in-house staff doing this project and not a third-party consultant. So we're taking care of that all internally with our staff that's specializing in FFNE procurement. It's just a little easier on this one that we can handle them in-house and don't have to go out to a third-party vendor.
That's great. Jamie?
Yeah, no questions. Thank you both.
I'm just curious, so this is for all the buildings?
Yep.
This building's plural, just wanted to make sure. Okay.
All three.
Great.
You already have a list of the kinds of things that the building wants, or is this something you have to work with the police, fire, DPW, et cetera, to?
Yeah, so Craig, great question. In design, right, we design in furniture. That's fairly generic. So we know, you know, captain's office has this sort of sized desk and this general shaped desk and this kind of chair. And that captain's desk should be essentially equal to a lieutenant's desk in the police station. But we don't, we haven't picked that stuff out yet. We haven't selected colors. We haven't gone through that kind of next step. This process is to go through that next step, and then the important piece for the town is to actually go through the procurement process, in this case, likely using existing state contracts that are available to the town for use. You get a good value, and you're able to, you know, fine tune things and make sure that you're getting actually what you want. You have a high quality, and you have a good vendor that's installing them for you. So that's really the process now, and what we'd be doing across all three departments, so.
And you order the stuff in advance so that...
Yeah, so, so the reason why we're executing or looking to execute now is so that we're able to go through the design process and have orders in in time for the fire substation opening, which will be the first building that, you know, comes online.
Thank you, Greg.
Just out of curiosity, with the tariffs and everything going on, is this, is this equipment sourced in the U.S.? Or will it be shipped in, or?
So I'd say it's a variety of different answers to that, Dottie. Depending on what manufacturers are doing, how they're responding to tariffs, you know, we'll see what happens. I don't suspect a huge impact. This is a relatively small package in comparison to the buildings that are rather large in comparison. So the impact, or the kind of exposure for the town is a little bit limited. That said, we keep an eye on that stuff and try to make sure that we're getting the best value for the town. They will be off of state contracts, so you do get a little bit of benefit there that it's often of an existing state contract, and so you're able to kind of see the price, see the price over time for an item, and make sure that you're not just, you know, paying on a spike of something, so. There is a little bit of vision into that pricing. That said, like everything else in open markets, these things do change over time.
Great. Excellent. All right, Craig?
Sure. I move to approve the Castle Booze Associates Amendment Number Five, Public Safety Building Project FFNE Design Procurement and Closeout in the total amount of $175,000.
Second.
That's Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. All right, thank you very much. Next, we have discussion and vote, Fontaine Brothers Contract Change Order Number One, Public Safety Buildings Project.
Do you want to do your spiel?
A brief spiel. The board may recall that you adopted a technical review committee change order process for this building project, much like you used in the Glen James project, where there is a small group of individuals involved in municipal building committee and the project team who look at field change orders that are very common and happen once you start breaking into the ground with steel to make decisions on bundling small change orders to bring them back to awarding packages for the final authorization of those change orders. As we did with the building project with Glen James, of course, a few years, we'd have project managers come in and just talk through with the board, usually, and I think it's in here, the actual spreadsheet log showing every single change, both credits, when things change in price in our favor, change orders in the opposite direction. This is your first of what I assume will be many over the course of a project. It's for $3,480, there will be ones that are larger in the future, I'm sure. But Walter usually comes in and just walks through what the changes, why it was necessary in the field to keep the project going. And I think one of the most important things is keeping it kind of running tallies and seeing your notes of how much of the contract duration has passed, so we're 20% into this project. We have spent 1% of our contingency budget, with the remaining 99% held in reserve, because that's obviously important for the board to keep track of, and I think for the public to be aware of as these things come in. If you kind of pop into one meeting and, I think, you see $175,000 for design, and say, oh, these people have lost their minds, they're getting the fanciest furniture that's ever existed, of course. It's important to put that in the context of the scale of the project, and the square footage, and what those budgets actually are. And so in this case, it's $3,480. Walter will talk through what the particulars are. I think it's important to note, there's the soft cost contingencies for design base, items that we talked about above. I forgot to include in the notes here, but there's also construction contingency, I think, of eight...
8.7 and change?
Million, 8.7 million, which, so when you roll those contingencies in the project being bid and under the budget, you're looking at closer to 16, right?
Eighteen.
Eighteen million. That, again, some of that will end up ultimately being spent through change orders, as things involve a field that we're saving Glen James for, to work hard for the next 18 months to spend as little as possible. Anything we don't spend there, it never pays for any of those taxes, so. So that's our process. Walter, you want to just walk through whatever is in this, this log from the board?
Yeah, so three PCOs. The first PCO, remember, we do have geothermal on this project. So back when we were doing the irrigate, geothermal test wells to get their rate of production and their, sorry, what's the word I'm looking for?
Their capacity.
Conductivity, to determine how many we needed. We had the test well over at Main Street, and I think we might have told you guys a couple times that the, you might hear the, the machine running for a couple days. Well, they, they did have some trouble getting it in there, and they ended up putting it right in the corner of where the building is, not five feet outside, 10 feet outside. So we did have to decommission it, otherwise we would have just left it alone. But we needed to pay for that decommissioning. So the, and the end result of that was getting someone here as quickly as we could. That cost $5,000, so they needed, it's a 500-foot...
600-foot well.
Well, it needed to be cleaned out and then made safe and cut down below the foundation. So that was done on CCD. Costs came in very favorably to get it done that quick. Change order, PCO four, was a change in low wall, change in low wall support for steel and rebar. I think this was actually across a couple of locations at the public, at the fire substation.
Yeah, just a clarification and details, we were able to remove something that wasn't necessary and take a credit.
So really, those are the only two that affect the cost of this change order. The third one is unit price allowance draws, our unit price draws from the contract. Within the contract, we have multiple unit prices that were included. Two of them that are being drawn down upon on this PCO are the mass rock excavation and then the trench rock excavation. So within the contract, we have a total of $150,000 worth of mass rock excavation. With this PCO, we're allowing Fontaine to bill $34,506 of that. That was in the contract bid, so it's really just the authorization for them to bill against it. Trench rock, we have $300,000 carried, and this is authorization for $5,556. These are tracked daily by the PMA team, confirmed against what Fontaine, the Fontaine team and the site contractor track. And then we make sure that the numbers add up with the Geotech and with KBA as well. So it's tracked on a daily basis. Signs slips, before they can bill, they need to have their authorization on the PCO. So no change in contract price, but they did draw down on that contract value. So anything not billed against at the end of the project would be turned back over as savings.
Okay, great. Any comments or questions?
Nope.
Thank you both.
Nope, this is typical. We're, we're used to this now, so.
So I move to approve the Fontaine Brothers contract change order number one, Public Safety Buildings Project in the amount of $3,480.
Second.
That's Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Terrific.
We're working on project signs.
So we're very excited. We have clearance from the Army Corps of Engineers starting to back the site to establish the work going on, do most of your things moving along well.
That's huge.
When you talk about having FFNE lined up for a fire substation on May, what was, what were you estimating for location on that site?
That's November. No, August.
Maybe November, December?
No, August. I have to pull it back up. One's August, one's November, I think.
August 26.
Sorry. So we're about, like that mentioned, about 20%. So we're about, like that mentioned, about 20% of the way through the...
The total project.
Through the total project, or so through the construction portion of the contract. So yeah, I believe it's middle of August for fire substation and middle of November, end of November for Main Street for public safety and DPW. Yes. Sorry, it's a lot of words.
Two sites are...
2026 or 27?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. Impressive.
Little bit smaller buildings than, but spread out versus the school. And timing in between the move and all that is a little bit, little bit easier.
Well, we appreciate your work and we especially appreciate all the people that are on site working in these hot weather conditions and, you know...
They're staying safe. They started early and left early, which was good to say.
That's great. Excellent. Awesome. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So are you Angelique?
Yes.
Excellent. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna get to your item right now then. Hold on one second.
We're going there. Angelique, do you want to come join us up here?
Oh, sure.
This microphone while not projecting to the room projects to ECAT, so you'll be on TV. Yep, that one right there. Just have a seat.
And it's just Angie, it's not...
Angie?
Yeah. Angelique's a little...
It's just my mom.
It's a pretty name.
Thank you.
So I just want to just mention, so we do have an opening on the Human Rights Committee and Angie has filled out a volunteer application. And the mission of the Human Rights Committee is to promote Easton's vision of a community that has at its core values, freedom from bigotry, hatred, intolerance and disrespect, to build a stronger, more unified town that represents and recognizes both our diversity and our commonalities, to work with community groups and agencies, to educate and promote understanding, to eliminate prejudice and intolerance, and to confront statements and actions that conflict with the core values expressed above. So there's a little bit more in the packet about the membership and responsibilities and so forth, but that's pretty much the gist of it. We have a very robust HRC that we've had for several years now that this board is very proud of, works, you know, very strongly with the community, but in conjunction with the board supporting them. So just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in that piece.
All right, well, I'm Angie Harris. And so I am, I live here in Easton. I have now for the past of about maybe five years or so, my child goes to, she's in fourth grade now, going into fourth grade. So that's pretty exciting. So she's in Olmstead. And it's been, and so it's been really a great experience and such. Also on the advisory board of raising multicultural kids. And so I know, and I am somewhat well-versed with what's happening in the Easton public schools and such. And so it's, and also additionally, I guess maybe I'll talk about my background too in terms of like professionally. So I'm a researcher. I'm actually Associate Dean of Diversity and Inclusion at the Medical School over at Boston University. And I also do faculty development work and I do a lot of work in terms of working to try to promote inclusion and equity and things like that within different areas and spaces. And so not just, you know, within my institutions that I've worked at, but also within a number of different nonprofits throughout the country and also different, just, you know, different community organizations and such, whether it's in Southern California, Milwaukee, or New York, you know, et cetera. And so part of it is that, you know, I absolutely love living here and Easton's an amazing place. And I realize that I have, I attended a meeting a little bit about maybe two years ago with just people who lived in the neighborhood and was saying, you know, what can people do to try to really do more within the community? And I'm like, yeah, that's actually a really good idea. And so we talked about that. It was actually right by my house. Like I live up here over on Wedgewood. And it, and it was something where I wanted to make sure that I did something, but I just didn't really have the time just yet. And I was reminded by, reminded by one of my friends that was at that party, like, oh yeah, what are we doing? I'm like, oh yeah, definitely need to do something. And I definitely want to be involved within the town, especially considering that I'm so incredibly invested here as well as my child. And I, out of all the places I've lived, this is definitely my absolute favorite. I love it here. And it's in terms of just feeling welcoming and supportive and things like that. And so I definitely would want to be part of making the town more, you know, inviting and such.
That's great. Well, your background is exceptional and, you know, you bring a lot of skills.
You want me to start? We're very fortunate to, A, have you as a resident and B, have you as a volunteer. So thank you so much for joining the ranks of the, you know, parents and, you know, Craig and Dottie have brought kids up here too. And so it's fantastic. We feel very fortunate that you're here tonight. And really awesome that you're taking time out of your busy schedule to, to volunteer as we all do. And it's, and you're right, there's no good time, right? There's no, there's not, because you're only going to get busier with your professional life. And as your child who's in fourth, I have one in fifth, that's only going to get busier. So you're jumping off at a good time because we're all in the deep end and we're just glad you're joining us.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You definitely qualify. So Easton is very fortunate to have you as a parent of a child in the community. And with your background, now wanting and willing to serve the community, you've already expressed, or you already serve on a local private organization, RMK. And now the town is grateful and thankful to have you. So I appreciate you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
I'm the representative from the Select Board to the Human Rights Committee and have been since about 2017. It's a fantastic group of people. And I'm glad that you've decided that you want to, you want to step up. I do have a couple of questions. The meetings are, we've gone back to in-person meetings. And they're going to be on the first Tuesday of every month, starting at about 6:00, 6:15 at the Queeset House by the, by the library.
Okay.
Okay. So I don't know what your schedule is like in terms of your ability to, to make those meetings in person?
Yeah, for the most part, I will be able to. I work in the city over at, you know, kind of like by Boston Medical Center. So theoretically speaking, once I leave at 4:35, like today, I should be able to, however... So I will, but it's Boston traffic more so in terms of just commuting in from work. But I do, would be able to be there by, I would hope by 6 o'clock. I likely would be able to leave a bit earlier. I just find, which is interesting is that the traffic is worse between 2:30 and like, it's oddly enough. And so it, so yeah, but I would be able to make it though. I mean, the parking over there is really hard, but yeah. By the library, that's where the Girl Scouts, my daughters and Girl Scouts too, we used to meet there. And it was always like, oh, you know, trying to get there really early before the other parents.
Hopefully that time, 6:00, 6:30 over there will be fine because there won't be a lot of other activities going on.
Yeah, probably not on it too. Yeah, yeah.
So we're looking for not only people with your experiences, but people who are willing to step up and really get actively involved. Because the committee is involved in a whole bunch of different activities and we need workers rather than thinkers. We need people who really want to get involved. We do the Pride, we do the Pride event every year. We do an event at NRT. And so we really need people who are willing to step up and say, okay, I will take on responsibility. And we just, we just selected a new chair and vice chair. Our current chair is stepping down. And so we wanted to be able to get somebody going really quickly. So when I read your, your material, I said, wow, this is going to be incredible, having Angela as a member of our committee. So I welcome you and thank you very much for stepping up.
Awesome. Great. Thank you so much. Yeah, I mean, I definitely look forward to, I mean, it's, it's funny because you have the T-shirt from the HRC T-shirt and such, that maybe we got it from Pride, maybe a couple of years, or whatever it is that we wear pretty frequently and such. And so I keep saying like, every time I'm going, I'm like, I need to, you know, it's like, this is my reminder. This is my reminder, I need to actually like, you know, serve my actual town.
Well, I love hearing all the things that you were saying about Easton and it really makes us happy because we work so hard to, you know, try to have opportunities available and have the right boards and committees and so forth. We put together our own diversity, equity and inclusion statement recently for the Select Board. And it's a very strong and powerful document. We read our statements of ethics and values once a year after the elections. And we've had many people that have looked for employment in our town and said that that was one of the reasons that they were interested in Easton is because we make a very bold statement upfront. We want to be a welcoming community. People, all ages, backgrounds, abilities, life experiences. That's what makes it such a great community. So to bring your lived experiences to this is going to be amazing. We've also had some board members bring their kids to the meetings and those kids participate and help. So, you know, it's, you're always modeling the behavior, your great behavior for your daughter. But she may be interested in wanting to sit in on some of the meetings or certainly if there's an event, there's opportunities for kids to participate as well, so.
Yeah, she's really involved. She goes to karate here over at Personal Best and does the, like every other kid, I guess, in Easton. But also like Maplewood and all the other very Girl Scouts, very well-integrated. And so she loves doing things like that. So it's awesome.
Great.
It'd be fun.
Excellent.
All right, Craig.
So I move to approve Angelique, Angie Harris for a seat on the HRC Committee with an expiration date of June 30th, 2027.
Second.
So that's Bodger and Lamb. And this is a roll call vote?
Stebbins Harris.
Lamb Harris.
Full Janetti Harris.
Bodger Harris.
So congratulations. You've just been appointed and you'll get an email from the town clerk. It will give you instructions on how to go get sworn in and they'll give you the information on the meeting dates and so forth for your next meeting.
All right, sounds great. Thank you so much.
And I will let Angie share and the vice chair know that you've been, you've been appointed.
All right, awesome. Well, that's wonderful. Thank you so much. I'm really looking forward to this. It's going to be really exciting.
Great. We appreciate you.
Am I all set here?
And you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting, so.
What is it? What is it? I was looking at the agenda and I was trying to, I'm like, okay, I think this is beyond my wheelhouse. As well as earlier, so I'm like, yeah, so I'm okay with, I'm all set?
Yep, you're all set.
Thank you so much. I look forward to working with you all.
There's no changing your mind now. All right, let me see. We are at item seven, approved fiscal year, 25-year-end transfer from injured-on-duty indemnity fund.
Please find that memo from Finance Director 29 to get out detailing the request for transfer of the fund. As you may recall, the board requested in town meeting approved creation of the injured-on-duty reserve fund. A few years back, it is a special reserve fund that the Select Board manages under Policy 56. The board is aware, Fire Department has had numerous long-term injured on-duty absences that, coupled with the many designations from department due to budget consistently, you know, to fulfill override, are causing significant overtime costs that require relief for fiscal 25 budget, Fire Department from this fund. Specific dollar, I believe, is 40...
Up to 43,000.
Up to 43,000 and is consistently intended purpose of this reserve fund. I recommend your approval, Wendy's here to answer any questions.
Okay.
I don't, I read through it prior. So no questions, Wendy. It's just, yeah, it's a state of, you know, again, we talk about some of the fallout and what we're going to be dealing with over the next, especially 12 months and trying to put next year's budgets together too. So I know we're all going to be working hard at that. So thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
How long do you anticipate this transfer will get us?
So this transfer is for fiscal 25. It's to close on fiscal 25. Next year is going to be a whole other year.
So is that fiscal 25 in its entirety? Forty-three? Okay.
Yeah, so the amount that's budgeted in the IOD line item, it's only, you know, it's just under 19,000. The actual expenditures were about 141,000, but there's surpluses in other lines. The department does have a bottom line budget. So at the end of the day, in going through it with the chief, is just looking for a transfer of up to 43,000. And if at the end of the year, when we close everything out, they need less than that, then we'll transfer only the amount that's needed, not more than 43, but it could be less, but probably not much less.
Okay.
And then Mark, a question about fiscal 26 that we're only a week into now. For micro call, we went down closer to nine firefighters. We didn't cut nine positions out of the budget. Going into 26, we cut two, but that kind of instability of reverse seniority department makes it functionally impossible to try to recruit people to fill those six-plus month in openings right now. The silver lining there is that those are budgeted salary funds we're not currently spending. And so that's if anxieties continue or there's other overtime that can offset there. It, so the line is a very, very thin, small one. It's not a good situation. It's not good for firefighters to be doing this much overtime. But we just, we don't know what these small months are going to look like.
$43,000 isn't, doesn't really seem like a lot of money for a whole fiscal year. And I'm just worried that fiscal 26 is going to be a lot more than that.
So again, another small silver lining is in 26, we do now, under our insurance that we renegotiated for this year, have wage loss coverage for injured-on-duty for police and fire. That can't be applied to pre-existing absences, but on a go-forward basis, we will have financial support from money to help offset some budget impact of new injuries on duty, which was negotiated into our premiums, which is okay.
Okay, great.
Provide a small lifeline because the actual IOD expense line is underfunded as are all the expense lines in every department.
I do have a serious concern that, you know, we're running so lean with the Fire Department that people order to overtime. There will be more injuries just due to the nature of burning them out. So this number I anticipate to increase next year, which is a conversation to be had. But this isn't the fix. Anyway.
All right. Craig?
So I move to approve the fiscal year year-end, fiscal year 25 year-end transfer from injured...
There's actually a motion in the packet in year, under number seven, at the end of that paragraph.
Nope, I don't have any.
I have the memo.
Sorry, thank you. I move the board to vote to approve the disbursement of up to $43,000 from the Injured-on-Duty Indemnity Fund for providing replacement services for injured firefighters during fiscal 2025, with a final amount to be determined once all departmental bills and encumbrances have been submitted to accounting.
Second.
So that's Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Thanks, Wendy.
Thanks, Wendy.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you, Wendy.
All right, number eight, Discussion and Vote Fiscal Year 26 Building Cleaning Services Contract, M&amp;M Contract Cleaning, Inc.
Dottie, town outsourced cleaning services from a number of facilities roughly a decade ago. We went out to bid on a new term for cleaning and the existing bidder was the lowest responding responsible bidder at $61,850. This is a modest increase from a cost of $57,000 three years ago. It has been very stable with the cost of roughly $56,000 back in 2017. So it's increased by, you know, about $5,000, $5,500 in the past 10 years, which is quite manageable. So there's already funding carried in the budgets of the departments, DPW, Water, Problem Camp, Police, Fire. Contracts for one year, the option to extend for two additional one-year periods. Director Gill, I recommend your approval.
Okay, great. They're doing a good job. They're doing a good job. All right. Craig?
So I move to approve the fiscal year 26, 2026 Building Cleaning Services Contract with M&amp;M Contract Cleaning in a total amount of $61,850.04 cents.
Second.
That's Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Excuse me. Item nine, Discussion and Vote Sursage Office Supplies Contract with WB Mason, July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2027.
I think Dottie attaches a contract resulting from Sursage Consortium purchase of office supplies. Sursage is a regional purchasing consortium that we are a member of with more than a dozen of municipalities to all purchase certain supplies that whether you're in a small town or a big city, you can use a paper printer, Inc. This contract will be for WB Mason. It will be in effect for two years. I recommend approval.
Okay, I'm ready. Just move to approve the Surgis Office Supplies Contract with WB Mason, July 1, 2000. Just move to approve the Searges Office Supplies Contract with WB Mason, July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2027.
Second.
That's Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Discussion and vote, updating the Select Board 2025 meeting schedule.
Sure, thank you, Donnie. Attached is a proposed modified schedule for your meetings for remainder of this year. Board some time ago adjusted to be meeting once every few weeks during the summer and I am recommending we do this year round. This would promote administrative efficiencies. It will likely lengthen the duration of individual meetings, particularly during town meetings season. And it will increase the importance that applicants for board business certainly adhere to your agenda posting and scheduling guidelines so they don't miss dates for licensing. But if you assume a constant amount of business that's gonna be dispatched during meetings, it will reduce cert fixed costs that we have to expend no matter how long or short our meetings are. That includes generating agendas, hearing notices, agenda notes, minutes packets, meeting materials, and then just the administrative technical staff scheduling our guests, our licensees, pre and post being followed through. This is a very small change. I'm not gonna say it solves a budget issue, but we need to all and every one of our departments be able to be that things big and small that at least move us slightly in the, in the black. We'll have some additional administrative changes for the board's way of managing meetings and licensing, those kinds of other things of that nature that we will be seeking your approval for in future meetings. Because as we prepare for success, if we have additional budget cuts for 2027, these small bits will help towards the larger costs. So save, you know, on occasional overtime, printing, things like that, I think it's worthwhile, but it's also a fair choice. I think the net reduction in actual meetings is quite small. I think because we're already halfway through the year, it's, you're going from six meetings from later night through Christmas to four, but again, it's over the course of the year, we'll have to spend a little more time seeing these meetings.
So I appreciate, I think it's a creative and you need to get there, right? We need to be creative in how we're managing budgets moving forward. Personally, my, you know, and this is just for me, that if I miss one, now that's a significant amount of time and potentially a lot of business that's getting covered. And like you said, these meetings will be longer than one every two weeks, so. But that doesn't mean this isn't the way we should go, it just, it, you know, because everyone's jobs are gonna be tougher than the next year. There's no doubt about it, including everyone in this room and everyone that works for the town and departments. So I think this is a small sacrifice for, certainly for me to make, to try to do my best to be here for every one of those meetings and not miss any one of them. Because you guys are all sacrificing a heck of a lot in terms of the amount of extra time that needs to be put in over these next several months as we figure this out.
This isn't set in stone though, right? This is just a guideline, correct?
No, we set your schedule and your time. You have the right to change your schedule at any time. Try not to do it too much because it's, your schedule sets the expectation for all the other boards for when these rooms are available and things like that, so.
Okay.
And we also do figure we back out, we follow town meetings around your schedule certain sense, so it's not set in stone, we don't like to change it.
Understood. I appreciate everything you've, you've said and I understand the logic behind everything. And I will support this and hopefully it will be a temporary measure. I don't know how, we'll come back every two weeks, but I echo Jamie's concerns. When I miss a meeting and it's four weeks, I feel disconnected. God, if it's six weeks, I will feel completely disconnected, which I don't think is fair to the people of this town as an elected person and a representative of them. Beyond that, I'm not a proponent of four-hour meetings at all for any group, any group. Hour three, hour four, people are just voting yes or no or whatever. You don't want to believe that, but I, you see it and they just want to get out of the room and they rush through things. And I don't like that either. So for the time being, sure, I'll go ahead with this, but I do have serious concerns about four-hour meetings and that being a quality meeting, because there's no such thing in my opinion as a four or five hour meeting that's quality, and being disconnected for up to six weeks at a time. I don't like any of those, but, and I don't say that, I know like I'm just piling on stuff onto your already difficult plate. And I don't, I don't want to do that because you're, what you're trying to do is, is correct and right, but I have to say that. That's how I feel.
Craig?
Appreciate that. I looked at the schedule and I look at it from a different perspective for holidays, except it was fine, so. But I appreciate what both Jamie and, and Mark are saying about the scheduling, but I also understand that it needs to be done at this point.
I agree. I mean, this is gonna be a really tough year for everybody who touches anything to do with town hall, whether you're on a board, a committee, you work here, you come here to pay your bills, you use any of the town services, and we're gonna have to make all these little tweaks. It's a lot of work to put these meetings together. It doesn't look like it from our perspective because we're not doing the work, although I do have to do a lot of this for some of the other boards that we don't have staff for. We're gonna have, we're not gonna have staff for boards and committees, you know, and I think it's gonna be hard for people who want liquor licenses to, you know, follow a three-week schedule. It's gonna be a lot of readjusting, but we're, we just have to make the, my biggest concern, you know, other than the financial impact of a failed override, is the, that we cannot expect our staff to continue doing the same output of work that they've, they've done before with less resources. So this is, you know, the Select Board's gonna have to take one for the team on this for the time being. You know, like Connor said, it's gonna impact a couple of meetings before then. If something came up that was an emergency, we could always add something, but I think we're gonna, this is gonna be a way to kind of put training wheels on and see, are we gonna be able to do this? Obviously, if we can't get the work done or it becomes, you know, a real problem in another way, we should talk and revisit it, but I think this is, this is unfortunately the step in the direction that we have to go right now. Nobody loves four-hour meetings, believe me, being on the PACE committee.
Yeah, I agree.
But you know, if, if it's gonna save efficiency and time, it, you know, for our staff to be able to put these meetings together, then that's, that's the way it's gonna be. So I think we're gonna be having some more discouraging conversations like this as we move forward, you know, throughout the year, unfortunately.
Right.
And I appreciate what you both have said and I didn't really think of it from that perspective, but that is gonna be really hard, so.
Yeah.
All right, is this a vote or is that just a?
It's a vote of the board. Again, it's your.
Okay.
So I move to update the Select Board 2025 meeting schedule as included in the packet.
Second.
That's Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. All right, next we have acceptance and resignation of the Human Rights Committee, Beth Devonshire with a seat expiring June 30th, 2027. We do have a memo acknowledging that resignation and I just, I'd like Craig to speak first about Beth because you've worked the closest with her.
This is a loss, a huge loss for the Human Rights Committee. She's been chair for the last year. She's actively involved in the community. She's a big supporter of human rights issues and she's experiencing some health issues and she needs to step down and I, I'm sorry to see her go, but also she needs to take care of herself.
All right. Beth has been an amazing contributor to the committee and to the community. I've gotten, had the pleasure to get to know her a little bit throughout this period of time and we will definitely miss her, her touch on that committee and hopefully she will stay connected and, you know, she's welcome back anytime. So we really appreciate you, Beth, and we will accept your resignation with regret. So Craig, if you want to.
I move to approve the resignation from the Human Rights Committee of Beth Devonshire for a seat that expires on June 30th, 2027.
Second.
That's Bodger and Lamb and it's a roll call vote.
Yeah, and Craig, please send her our well wishes from the entire board.
Absolutely, will do that.
Thank you. Stebbins Devonshire.
Lamb Devonshire.
Full Janetti Devonshire.
Bodger Devonshire.
All right. Other acceptance of the minutes, April 17th, 2025, June 16th, 2025, and June 23rd, 2025.
So I'll move Bodger.
Second.
That's Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Did you want to say something?
We still have those licenses, permits to get through.
I am not anticipating my chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for mentioning that. I completely forgot about that.
I know the cadence so well, but I'm like, all right.
I know.
I know where this is going. Let's not get comfortable.
Or if we revise the agenda today, these were filed in advance of the posted deadline of holiday shipping that forward and so these could not have been anticipated by chair.
All right. So the one-day liquor license, these are for Langwater Farm, Stone Soup LLC doing business at Langwater Farm, Summer Craft Market at 215 Washington Street, July 10th, 2025, 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM with a storm date of July 13th. Kevin O'Dwyer is requesting this one-day beer and wine license for the Summer Craft Market. An Easton Police Detail is not required for this event. Any questions, comments?
I move to approve the Stone Soup LLC doing business at Langwater Farm, 215 Washington Street for July 10th, 2025, from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM with a storm date of July 13th, a Summer Craft Market.
Second.
That's Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Community Pizza Night, Stone Soup LLC doing business at Langwater Farm, 215 Washington Street, 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM on the following dates, July 11th with a storm date of July 12th, July 18th with a storm date of July 19th, July 25th with a storm date of July 26th. Kevin O'Dwyer is requesting these three one-day beer and wine licenses for the Community Pizza Nights. An Easton Police Detail is required for each of these events.
So I move to approve the Stone Soup LLC doing business at Langwater Farm, 215 Washington Street from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM on July 11th with a storm date of July 12th, July 18th with a storm date of July 19th, July 25th with a storm date of July 26th. These are for the Community Pizza Nights, which are always a big fake, big take in Easton.
Second.
That's Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Terrific. Do they need to get these because when we voted to give them, to award a license to them, that just has not gone through?
It's still in process with the ABCC, yeah.
Okay. All right, so town administrator notes.
Just a reminder that the Tricentennial Parade is this coming Saturday at 10:00 AM. The Tricentennial Committee encourages residents gathered along Center Street and Main Street from Rock Ridge to Pond, for best view as the parade passes, sponsored by the Hayes Group. There's a lot of information at easton300.org and I think I've listed it here on Facebook, there's a notice on the town website, I think there's a notice all over the place. I'm sure it's gonna be an awesome event. The Tricentennial Committee's done a great job of everything we've done so far. I'm sure this will be no different, so a shout out to thank all the volunteers and builders involved in that happen, as well as to Sean, all the staff, who inspired all the work, sort of helped coordinate some pretty huge events in town. So thank you to everyone involved and have a nice time.
Excellent.
David Clifton, who's the chair, has indicated this is gonna be the biggest parade that Easton's ever had, so I'm kind of excited about it too, so. We actually should meet at Short Street, I think is where the, you know, the wagon is gonna be for us, in case you wanna walk.
Well, I think, I think we, we got a memo. I can resend it to everybody that says that we can park at the center school and then they'll have a shuttle to get us over to Short Street. So there's a, there's a well-defined strategy to getting this together.
And I have an acceptance from, from Representative Plouffe and with, from Representative -elect Lisa Field to ride with us and I'm working on the state senator too.
Great, excellent.
Wonderful.
Sean?
Nothing for me.
Nothing for you.
Just getting ready for Saturday.
Just getting ready for Saturday. Jamie?
No, thank you.
No notes, no thank you.
Craig?
Well, I've got a couple of things. So Wednesday, July 9th, just this week, Billy and the Jets, we will be at seven o'clock in front of Oaks Ames Hall. It's gonna be a beautiful night. This band is fantastic. All the bands this year are really, really great. So make sure that you come, bring your lawn chairs and if it's cool, bring a sweatshirt, blanket, and there'll be beverages available for purchase from Shovel Town Brewery, pizza. And it's just, it's, it gets bigger every year, so it's a lot of fun. It's a lot of fun to see your neighbors, people bring their kids, everybody's dancing, so really look forward to seeing people there. I want to remind people, we say this, I think, every time about joining the town crier because you'll get all this information. It's got information about all the concerts, about the parade. Wings of Hope is having movie nights in the park starting Saturday, July 12th, and every Thursday, July 17th to August 7th. And those are free. Ames Free Library has all kinds of events happening, the Children's Museum. So make sure you get the town crier and follow these on social media as well. And wishing everybody a happy summer and, and see you at the parade on Saturday. So with that, we'll take a motion to adjourn?
I'll move Bodger.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I almost forgot.
Yes.
I'm just a little bit out of kilter with the holiday this week. So we have an executive session under purpose three of Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Eastern Firefighters Local 2790 Collective Bargaining Unit. We are going to make a motion to enter into the executive session, not to return to open session, so.
So I'll move Bodger.
Second.
So that's Bodger and Lamb with a roll call vote.
Stebbins, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Janetti, yes?
Bodger, yes.
All right, terrific. Oh, I also forgot to say, thank you to ECAT. We appreciate you being here to support us tonight.
Oh, yeah, thank you.